I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dave?
As we join in prayer this morning, I'm going to start first by reading Matthew, Chapter 5, Verse 14 through 16, which goes as follows: "You are the light of the world; a town built on a hill cannot be hidden; neither do people light a lamp and put it under a bowl; instead they put it on a stand, and it gives light to everyone in the house. In the same way let your light shine upon others, that they may see your good deeds and glorify your Father in heaven." So Heavenly Father, as we come today, we just continue to ask for your blessing on this county, to help us conduct the business in a, in a manner pleasing to you, Lord, and, and Father, as we join, we'd ask for your continued guidance for each and every one of those of us involved in this county. We would also ask, Father, that, that you be reminded that we sorely need some moisture. So Father, rainfall will be appreciated, and we'll give you that thanks in advance. Giving you thanks today for joining us in this meeting. In Jesus's name, we say amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dave.
Just a couple of comments as we open the meeting. First of all, this is our budget hearing day, and you'll see that on the calendar. Our first public hearing will be at 8:40 and then another one at 8:50. And we look forward to receiving comments, questions about that. Secondly, I wanted to ask the other commissioners, are there any things that you want to pull or add to the agenda today? Or are we okay with it as printed?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would offer a motion to, to accept the consent agenda as it is.
Just, just, we're just, we're just in comments here for a second.
Okay, I'm sorry.
But I'll accept, I'll accept that in just a second. And then lastly, I just wanted to point out, we have a commissioner absent today. We were aware that he was going to be absent, no emergency or, or health issues that we're aware of. But he will be back with us for the meeting that we have tomorrow evening. Now, moving on to the consent agenda.
Trying to get this meeting sped up.
But we've, we've got another five minutes before the first hearing, so we're, we're, we're in good shape, Dave.
I'll offer this motion in, in slow motion, how's that? Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the consent agenda as it is printed.
There is a motion to approve the consent agenda items. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes. Public comment is anything that is not on our agenda that someone needs, needs or feels the desire to make a comment about. Seeing or hearing none, then we need to wait until 8:40 to start our hearings, because those are published. And, Robert, is there one item on the agenda that we might be, be able to move out of order? Well, how long, Kelly, on your resolution on the flex spending? Is she, is Kelly even here? Okay, well, I was going to move that one up, but... Well, let's do this. Let's go to the board governance, since that's, we, we can cut that discussion off at any time and re-initiate the discussion. You should, each of you commissioners, have in front of you a work copy, and it should be up on the screen as well. With regard to the goals and objectives that we've had, let's just talk about that just for a little bit, and then if we need to come back to it later, we can. On the first page of that document, no changes were made from anything that we've talked about in the, in the past. The changes and additions and so forth were on the second and third pages. And I just wanted to call your attention to a couple of things. I tried to incorporate everything that we discussed, the suggestions that were made during our previous discussions with regard to the immediate, ongoing, intermediate and long-term topics. The couple of things that I did was I divided out some of the projects. Instead of having all in one sentence, trying to delineate each project by itself. And if you'll notice on the second bullet point under ongoing, I put an "other" there. We don't need to keep that, but I did that to remind us, maybe there's something else that we haven't talked about and we want to add a third, or it could even be more than that, project. And then down, if you can scroll up just a little bit on the computer, then I did break out the infrastructure projects that we talked about. And then on the next bullet point, I tried to capture what was said about the joint meetings that we want to have with the different entities. And the quarterly one, the third bullet, is one that was added, because that was suggested the last time. The next bullet point, I did divide out those different entities, and then I added in KCCA, which is an organization we belong to, and I, and they have a legislative presence now with a lobbyist and so forth. And I think we need to be in sync with that organization as well. Monitoring compliance, the, the next bullet point, I tried to, to phrase that as well as I understood each of you making comments about it. And then same way with the last bullet on that particular, on that particular page. So then go to page three, please. And then on this one, again, on the intermediate, I didn't put an "other," but I tried to capture each of the projects that we've talked about. And whether it be with sales tax or other funding, revenue funding sources, I tried to list the projects that I heard referenced, but maybe you have others that we want to talk about as well. And then lastly, on the long-term, I just, that didn't change that much from what we've talked about before. But again, partnerships, working with others, and collaborating with other entities. So with that, we've got a couple of minutes here before we need to start our public hearing. Any general comments, and then we can come back to this after, in the order that it is on our agenda later on. Yes, Dave?
Mr. Chairman, and after having time to reflect, on the first page, under goals, where it says, I know we've, we've adopted that, but I'm wondering if a little change might not make sense. It says prioritize county services to align with available revenues. I wonder if it wouldn't be more accurate to say to align with available resources? Because things other than, than dollars in the bank aid us in our decision-making. So, including personnel and so on. So would that be a worthwhile suggestion?
Let's, let's hang on to that suggestion, but yes, I think it's a worthwhile one, to answer your question. So, yeah, he's suggesting in the first goal, instead of available revenues, we say available resources, which would encompass human and financial and, and everything else. So I think it's worthy of discussion in the future. We've got about one minute before the hearing. Any other just general thoughts before we go into the budget hearings?
I think in the long-term, page three, on the different projects that we have, I think we also need to keep the West Side wastewater treatment concept on there until we decide if we're going to do something, what we're going to do, when we're going to do, or whatever else. But I think it should at least be on the list, and then eventually...
Just a question, clarification. Under immediate, ongoing, we have West Side Sewer District. Are we saying one and the same?
Well, I, I think we are. They, they kind of keep showing up. In other words, we go through the deal in goals. We have all of the projects that are designed to help the community for safety and, and other needs, county facilities. And then we show them up there, and then we show them up again. I guess sooner or later, I like the fact that you're looking at scoring and everything else in the goals. But eventually, whenever we take this list, they almost ought to be all-inclusive, and then periodically, we need to look at them and score them in terms of resources or whatever else. What order do they show up? And I think at least on an annual basis, or maybe semi-annual, they ought to be shuffled as resources or priorities deem.
Okay. We'll keep that in mind for our further discussion here in a little bit. Larry, any particular comment before we go into budget hearings?
No, I'll wait.
Okay, all right. Well, then let's go into the first budget hearing this morning. And I want to ask for a motion to move into a public hearing for the, for any particular comments that might be about us proposing to exceed the revenue-neutral rate. So I would entertain a motion to go into public hearing for the revenue.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Larry. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
We are, and, and all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
We are now in a public hearing for the revenue-neutral rate with regard to Sewer District, let's see, what is it? Sewer District 3. I can't remember the number there for a second. And I, I failed to say that in my opening comment. This is for the Sewer District 3, not for the general budget at this point. So with that, Jenny?
Good morning. I am here to go through some information with you on Sewer District Number 3. As you know, we've been working through the budgets for several months.
Excuse me, pull the mic a bit closer on.
Okay. As you know, we've been working through budgets for several months, trying to get all of the facilities up to par and getting the, the funds up to where they can sustain themselves going forward in the future. Sewer District Number 3 is Towns Riverview. It has 309 billable lots. All of those lots are billed annually. 282 are actually connected, but the rest have availability to connect. It has two pump stations, and they're annually billed $400 per lot with a 10% discount if it's paid within 30 days. If not, that rolls over onto their tax statement. In the past, this district has struggled to pay for, pay for and maintain the sewer system without the County Public Works Department subsidizing it. We are, again, working to bolster that fund so that it can, it can provide for itself covering expenses. We are also utilizing some of the ARPA funds to upgrade, to provide reliable service in the future and allow to build a reserve over a period of time to address future well repairs as well as emergency generator backup systems. Proposed mill levy rate for 2023 is 6.441, which is approximately a quarter of a mill lower than 2022, which was 6.672. It is about a half a mill higher than the 2023 revenue-neutral rate. This equates to about a $12 annual increase for a $200,000 home on average. Do you have any questions?
So with that, questions from the commissioners, and then I'll open it up to any public comments that, that might be made. Dave, anything?
Not at all.
Questions or comments?
Tyler, if you want to move to, to the last page of that.
And then Larry?
Aye.
Well, here's the one that we need to see, yeah.
This is the...
Because you're special.
Can you turn it off?
I look at two myself, just because I want to keep track. So it's, as you can see, the revenue-neutral rate is 5.961. The proposed mill levy rate for 2023 is 6.441. So that's how much we're exceeding the revenue-neutral rate. But as Jenny pointed out, it's a, the mill levy itself is a little less than it was for this current year.
Correct.
With that, I'll open it up to the public. Anyone want to make comments with regard to Sewer District Number 3 and the fact that we're proposing a rate that exceeds revenue-neutral? Seeing or hearing none, I would close, we'll close the public comment part of this. And I would ask for the adoption of a resolution, which is Number 40-2022, which simply states, and I don't know, can you pull that up on the computer so people in the audience can see that? The resolution? Is that the end of this? Yeah. That it just simply is a resolution stating that this Sewer District will exceed the revenue-neutral rate for 2023. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would offer a motion to approve Resolution Number 40-2022.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Larry. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes. With that, we have about four or five minutes before the 8:50 published time for the public hearing for the other.
We do need to adopt the budget now that you...
Oh, yeah, yeah. Excuse, excuse me, I got ahead of myself. Yes, that'll take up our three or four minutes. We do need, I do need a motion to open a public hearing portion for the budget for Sewer District Number 3.
Mr. Chairman, I so move.
And is there a second to that?
Second.
We have a motion to go into public hearing for the budgeted expenditures for Sewer District Number 3. And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes. So we are now in the public hearing portion for Sewer District Number 3 with regard to budget experiences, expenditures. Jenny?
And we have a little bit more additional information on that. During 2022, early in the year, the county refinanced the bonds that were on the Sewer District Number 3, saving the county a total of approximately $182,600 over the life of it. It does reduce the annual debt service payment between $9,000 to $10,000 a year for doing that. Also, this budget shows a slight increase in expenditures, which is to allow the county to begin building that reserve fund and pay for potential increased expenses to the, to the city for the pickup for the addition of Sunset Terrace, which is an addition of approximately 70 additional homes. So with that, this, this district also has a delinquency rate of 9%. Any other questions? It's considerably higher. The others were two and four.
Other questions or comments?
Could I have those numbers again of how many lots there were versus how many are actually connected to the Sewer District 3?
Yeah, there's 309 lots that are billed. They're, they're all billed, even whether they're hooked up or not. And there are 282 that are actually connected.
So pretty close.
Yeah.
And is there any requirement that they do connect? Or do they have the right, if they're on a septic system now, and that fails, that they can go stay on septic? Or do they have to?
I, I believe they can stay on septic. They were all given the opportunity to hook up at the beginning when, when the Sewer District was created at county expense. So if they hook up now, it will be at their own expense.
But I would think the cost of connecting versus completing a new complete leach field system would be advantageous.
Should be.
Okay.
I can't say for sure, Bob, but I, I think most everyone, every lot that has a residence on it is hooked into the Sewer District. Some of those lots are vacant lots, like for example, in, in my case, or, excuse me, in the North subdivision case, there's several of us that have vacant lots that probably will not be hooked, and there's no septic on those lots at this particular point. Now, if they put a structure on there, then they would need to hook into the sewer system.
Okay, so it is set now that any new structure built does need to go to the common sewer district? Very good. Okay.
That is correct. Larry or Dave, anything else? Robert, anything for you, from you to add to this? All right, then we will go to the portion for the public comment. If there's any questions or concerns or comments from the public with regard to the budget for Sewer District Number 3. If not, we'll close the public hearing part of, of the budget for, for 2023 for Sewer District Number 3. And then we have a, I need a, a motion to approve that budget for 2023, and I would accept that now.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the budget for 2023 for Sewer District Number 3.
It's been moved. Is there a second? And it's seconded by Bob. On any additional comments or questions? If not, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Jenny, thank you very much. Now, we are at the 8:50 hour, a little bit past. We will go into the, the overall budget for the county. And first, we need to adopt the resolution, excuse me, to go into a public hearing for the purpose of discussing the revenue-neutral rate that we would be exceeding. So I would ask for a motion for opening a public hearing for that purpose.
Mr. Chairman, so move. One second.
And seconded by Dave, to open public hearing for the purpose of discussing the exceeding revenue-neutral rate for the 2023 budget. And Robert's going to lead us with this discussion.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
All right, well, this, this morning, we do have, for your consideration, Notice of Hearing to Exceed Revenue Neutral Rate. As Jenny pointed out, we've gone through months and months of preparation and refining and defining exactly what we're trying to accomplish for the 2023 budget year. And as you'll look at the Notice of Hearing, your revenue-neutral rate calculated was 44.235, 255 mils. What you have before you today is, in essence, a level or flat mill levy for 2023. The 2022 budget was 49.944. What is being proposed today is mill levy of 49.946. So pretend, in essence, a relatively flat mill levy. To, as the Board of County Commissioners and the department heads went through the process of developing their budget, as you recall, the Board of County Commissioners set three primary responsibilities, directions for the budget. And those included personnel, facilities, and a level tax rate. So as we went through the process, we achieved just as you set out, focusing on the employees' wage and benefits, facilities in terms of reserve funds, and then lastly, maintaining a level... and then lastly, maintaining a level tax rate. So within the notice of hearing, you'll see that between funds, some funds went up, some went down, obviously. But overall, we were able to accomplish a lot of that through a, a few revenue streams that we had available to us, some of that being through the ARPA funds, and some of it through the diligence of trying to bolster your beginning fund balance, which, which we did over the last couple of years. So in essence, then, we were able to accomplish the things that you were wanting to achieve for the 2023 budget. With that in mind, do you have any questions of me on this?
Before, before I open it to the other commissioners, it seems as if our biggest challenges were in the health insurance area where there was a substantial increase in, in rates for next year. And then trying to remain competitive with regard to personnel and so forth. And, and correct me if I'm wrong with those, but just highlight the top two or three things that created the most challenge in putting this together and staying as close to the revenue neutral rate as we could, even though it is exceeding it.
Okay. Really, for the, for the employee side, I bet, I know two of the commissioners were involved in the review of the health insurance. And as those two commissioners will recall, we had approximately a forty-one percent increase in health insurance, which equated to approximately one point six million dollars fully funded for the, for the health insurance. That's one aspect of it. The other aspect of it had to do with the increases in salaries, which will go into effect actually this year, this October, with the first paycheck there. We'll be able to, at least during this year, because of the vacancies, be able to absorb that in the current operating budgets of those. But for next year, we'll be utilizing some ARPA funds to fund the majority of those increases as well. Then, as, as you recall, then, with all those increases, you'll see your increase in capers retirement and things of that nature. So those go along with that. Keep in mind, then, one other challenge that we had was that, as we went through the process a couple of years ago of developing a structured reserve fund for equipment replacement, to balance the twenty-two budget, we ended up having to cut back in those reserve funds, not fully funding them, so we could balance the budget. This year, we were able to do that with the increased assessed valuation by maintaining a, what, what we feel is the appropriate dollar amounts to do things such as plan for replacement of infrastructure within the facilities, HVAC systems, and rolling stock vehicles and so forth and equipment. So those are some of the things that, that we focused on and were requested by the board of county commissioners.
Thank you for, for that. So questions or comments from the commissioners, Larry?
Oh, on the summary expenses page that we got, you know, just looking down the percentage line, you know, things jump out at you. You know, you might explain to why the community service center was up two hundred and four percent. But expand upon that a little bit. Somebody will look at that and go, wow, that's a big increase.
Well, some of that is, is due to reflecting the actual cost of that operations and before it had been absorbed in other areas. That's really the primary aspect of. Yes.
Bob?
Yeah, I think you alluded to the fact of some of the action taken to get 2022 into budget balance, if you will. Whenever you put off spending money just to make sure that the number looks right, you pay the price twice. And I think in 2022, not only did you put away money that held back capital improvements, vehicles, all those kind of things, but also there was a significant failure to keep up with all of our employees. So that coupled with the cost of living increases that we faced, not only in 2022 and, or 21, and now what we're facing in 22, we have to kind of pay the piper. And I think it's really important to know and understand that we took some of the ARPA money and put it toward these things, knowing full well that it's one-time money. We have to do something between now and when we do this all over again next year, that we make sure that we can stand up and pay that bill when we're going forward. So I think the fact that we have acknowledged what it really costs to be in business, and we're stepping up and we're saying, all right, we have basically a flat mill levy. Yes, we have more assessed valuation, but this is what it costs to be in business. And I think it is a responsible budget.
Thank you for that. Dave, any comments or questions?
I will.
Okay. So at this point, we'll ask if there's any comments from the public, concerns, questions, or anything with regard to the fact that we're proposing a budget that exceeds the revenue neutral rate. And let's see, those numbers on the mill levy side, the revenue neutral rate is forty-four point two five five. But as Robert said a little bit ago, the, the mill levy rate for this year compared to 2023 is just about flat. Comments? Questions? If not, we'll close the, oh, go ahead.
One more thing, we might comment, you know, and all of us have attended these other budget hearings for these other taxing entities, that, you know, we had to do, jump through a lot of hoops and stuff. And so if we could get just a little update from Dory on the projected cost of what this revenue neutral publication cost is.
So here. Here for Finney, for Finney County, it was just almost twenty thousand dollars to send out the revenue neutral rate notices. And that was just for the printing and mailing cost, postage. That didn't include any staff time, right?
So, you know, my, my question back to the taxpayers is, do you think it's worth it? Because, you know, the state's going to pay for it, which is us, for two years. And then after that, it resides on each individual taxpayers of Finney County. So, you know, I hope you, hope this is positive or negative. And let your state officials, your elected state officials know your thoughts. Because my personal opinion is, we do this anyway, and here we're doubling up and we're paying. We take a lot of valuable time away from our clerk and her staff to do this and publish all these, all these items that send out to every tax holder in Finney County, or property holder in Finney County. And it takes immense amount of time and money, as you can see. So if you have thoughts on that, please let us know.
And it may lead to our clerk asking for additional staff sometime because it, not only is it quite a bit of staff time just for the notices, but it's coming at a time in the year of elections. And we've got a lot going on with elections during the notice time as well.
Mr. Chairman, when you do vote on this resolution, I believe that it needs to be a roll call vote.
Oh, yeah, it does.
And we probably need to go back and correct that for sewer district three.
Needs to be one.
A roll call vote.
Yeah, I, I did miss that, and that is correct. It, it should be a roll call.
You, Mr. Chairman, I.
We'll go back and correct the sewer district here in a minute.
One question for Dory. How many pieces of property did individual notices have to be mailed in Finney County?
Because Finney, so it has to go to anybody who's exceeding the revenue neutral rate? So it would have been every property owner in Finney County, everybody who owns property in Finney County. They may not.
Some of them got two manila envelopes full of.
Yeah, it depends. So if they have a lot of gas and royalty interests, they may get even a box full of, there were boxes that went out. So, yeah, it's a rather large mailing.
Mr.
Yeah, and we did, I did miss the fact that it, the resolutions, not the budget itself, but the resolution should be roll call vote. And that's, that's on me as chair, I missed that.
I'll offer a motion if you want.
We are now going to close public hearing for the revenue neutral rate. And I would entertain a motion for resolution thirty-nine twenty.
Mr. Chairman, I offer the motion to approve resolution thirty-nine dash twenty twenty-two.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, and the clerk will call roll and ask for your vote.
Commissioner Larry Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Bob Kreitzer?
Aye.
Commissioner Lon Pisny?
Aye.
Commissioner Dave Jones?
Aye.
So now, with regard to the budget, and we'll, we'll correct the sewer district after this. The public hearing, I need, excuse me, I'm requesting a motion to open public hearing for the purpose of comments on the proposed 2023 budget. Is there a motion?
Go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move we open the budget hearing.
Second.
And seconded by Bob. And so we have a motion to open public hearing on the budget. All in, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes. And Robert, any additional comments with regard to the overall Finney County budget?
Once again, in summary, the net expenditures for 2023 is forty-nine million, three hundred twenty-two thousand, nine hundred fifteen dollars, with a proposed mill levy of forty-nine point nine four six. You see before you, off of the notice of the hearing, the breakdown by fund, you have approximately thirteen taxing funds within there, which generate that, that overall mill levy.
So commissioners, any additional comments or questions? If not, comments or questions from the public with regard to Finney County's overall budget for 2023? Seeing or hearing none, I propose, I announced that the public hearing portion of this is complete, and we'll move into adoption of the 2023 budget, and I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt the 2023 budget as published.
And it's been moved, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Dave. Any further comments or discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. No, not on the, not on the budget, just on the revenue neutral, exceeding revenue neutral. So now, let's go back and correct my error of, of calling for roll call on the revenue neutral resolution, which was forty dash twenty twenty-three, excuse me, twenty twenty-two. And there was a motion and a second, so we have that on the table. But now we need to have the clerk call roll and record our votes. So if you would, please, Dory.
Commissioner Larry Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Bob Kreitzer?
Aye.
Commissioner Lon Pisny?
Aye.
Commissioner Dave Jones?
Aye.
So we have that corrected and recorded properly in the minutes. Thank you for calling that to my attention, Dory. Appreciate it. All right, let's move on to the next item on our agenda. Once I get my agenda in front of me again. And John, I guess you're up for a couple, two or three items.
Do we need to move out of a hearing and into regular?
All right, yeah, I, I close the hearing. John, welcome.
Morning. Stacy Tenkaio is requesting a waiver to install a new non-RDMH manufactured home on the property located at one, 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 four, five, East Highway fifty in Finney County, Kansas. The property is owned rural residential and contains nine point six acres. There is currently one single-family home and multiple accessory structures on the property. However, there used to be a second home located on the north side of the property that was removed over a year ago. The second home was a manufactured home that used to house farmhands and had individual septic and electrical hookups. There is one well-located on the property that served both homes. The applicant would like to place a new manufactured home in the location of the previous one for her mother to live in. The property is currently, currently conforming, however, the addition of a second home would make it non-conforming. According to section five point zero six zero of the Finney County zoning, Finney County zoning regulations, only one single-family home is permitted per property. Since the previous manufactured home has been removed for more than one year, the owner would not be able to add a second home without a waiver from the governing body. A non-conforming use is defined in section twenty-two of the Finney County zoning regulations as any lot or structure lawfully occupied by use at the time of the effective, effective date of reg, of the, of this zoning regulation or amendments here too, which does not conform to the regulations of the district in which it is situated. Section twenty-two point zero eight zero of the Finney County zoning regulation states that non-conforming uses, as defined here, may be permitted to continue provided that no structural alterations, alterations, except those required by law or resolution, are made therein, and that the non-conforming use is not discontinued or abandoned for a period of one year. The governing body has granted similar waiver requests in the past. A waiver request in two thousand and nine was granted at thirty-three forty North A Street. The owner's request was to install a second manufactured home for their mother as she was not, as she was aging and was unable to make ends meet at her current residence. They were required to install a RDMH home instead of the typical manufactured home, which is required by the Finney County zoning, zoning regulations for that district. In two thousand and thirteen, a waiver was granted at fifteen fourteen Raceway in order to install a second manufactured home on the property. In two thousand and twenty-one, a waiver was granted at thirty-six sixty-five West Front Road. The owner's request was to install a second, second manufactured home for their mother as she was suffering from health issues. In two thousand and twenty-two, a waiver was granted at twenty-one oh three West Maple, Finney County, Kansas. The owner's request was to replace a second manufactured home for her daughter and her grandchildren to live in. The property is owned rural residential, which requires new homes to meet RDMH standards, and the applicant has already purchased the home and does not meet the RDMH standards. There are three alternatives. The governing body may approve the waiver as presented. The second alternative is the governing body may approve the waiver with changes. And the last alternative is the governing body may not approve the waiver. Staff is unable to recommend approval of the waiver, and Stacy is here to, is here to answer any questions, if you guys have any.
Larry, I will look at you first for questions or comments.
John, you said it's replacing an existing one, or the one that was there at one time?
One that was there at one time.
How long ago? Sure you said.
It was like a couple of years ago.
Anything else, Larry?
Bob? I think in keeping with our previous action, you know, we're in such a crunch for housing. I think this fits what has been done and what we've done in the past.
Dave?
I agree that we have set the precedent, and, and I can understand why neighborhood development's over here saying that they can't recommend, because it's not in the rulebook. Maybe it should be. But I'm, I understand completely what the request is, why, and, and I support it, so.
John, my question is just simply on the previous waivers that you've recited. We did not put any stipulation into those waivers that they needed, needed to make RDMH meet those standards, did we? In those waivers that we granted? I just want to make, consistency is the basis for my question.
So we did, or there was stipulations put by the commission for the one back in two thousand and nine, and they were required to install an RDMH home. The previous one that we did this year, there was no stipulations.
So in the, I don't have it on the screen there for a second. So we've, we've issued three waivers since that two thousand and nine time without the, requiring the standards. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. So the precedent's been set there too, it appears. So what is the board's desire with regard to this?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve this variance or waiver.
I'll second that.
Moved by Bob, seconded by Dave. Any further discussion? Seeing or hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you, John, and then we'll move on to another one.
Palm, Palmberg Land Serving Services on behalf of the Living Trust of Darrell and Joanne Goss is requesting to plat the Goss family subdivision. The property is generally located at fifteen-forty-five East Rodkey Road in Finney County, Kansas. The parcel contains eighteen-point-seven acres, and the property is currently zoned ag. The second submittal was submitted for plat review on July twenty-seventh of two thousand twenty-two, and no concerns were declared. The planning commission recommended approval, approval of the plat at the August eighteenth meeting. Your two alternatives are the governing body may approve the plat, or the governing body may not approve the plat, and staff recommends alternative one.
Okay. Being consistent on these presentations, we'll start with Larry. Any comments or questions?
No. If we can go to the plot again, what's the yellow piece below the blue box?
That's a, a different property. It's zoned suburban estates.
And does changing this zoning affect any of the contiguous property owners in any negative way?
It, there's no change in zoning. It's just plating it, plating out the property, so it won't affect any of the surrounding properties.
And there is an existing residence in this plot, and it doesn't affect it? It's, it moves into this new zoning category?
There's no zoning change.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
So this, this does not require a resolution, if I'm mistaken, or not mistaken, yeah, okay. I just want to make sure we're doing things correctly. So with that, I would entertain a motion. Well, Dave, did I ask you if you had any comments?
Yeah, this is, this is simply for rezoning, is that correct?
No.
Plating.
A plat, partial plat.
Okay. The zoning comes later here. I'm, I'm reading ahead here. So.
So if they're going to develop the property in the future, they will have to rezone the property. But at this time, it does not have to be rezoned.
My, my boo-boo, I'm sorry. I'll offer a motion.
Okay.
To approve the plat as requested.
There is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bob. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion to re, do this partial plat, approve this partial plat, please say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion passes. John, proceed on.
The applicant Arnolfo Garcia Arona is requesting to rezone the property generally, generally located at twelve-one-oh-one East Weeby Road in Finney County, Kansas, from A agricultural district to RR rural residential district. The property currently, currently has a house on it, and the applicant plans to use it as residential. The proposed use of this property as residential is not consistent with the comprehensive plan slash future land use. Rezoning the property to rural residential would be the best zoning district for a residential property out in the county. The, the rezoning of this property will not affect any of the surrounding properties. The governing body may approve the rezoning according to the criteria down below. The planning commission recommended approval of the rezoning request at the August eighteenth meeting, and then there are three alternatives. The governing body may adopt the planning commission's recommendation by approving the proposed resolution. The governing body may override the planning commission's recommendation by a two-thirds majority vote, or the governing body may return the recommendation to the planning commission with a statement specifying the basis of, for the governing bodies, for the governing body's failure to approve or disapprove. And staff recommends alternative one.
You've heard the presentation on rezoning this property, and any questions or comments before I entertain a motion?
I have a.
Yeah, go ahead.
Comment, more than a question. These corners on pivot irrigated quarters all average about seven acres, and they make a wonderful place to put a home. I, I don't know why we can't just come up with some kind of a policy to save them all of this trouble when they want to, something on a corner, want to be able to somehow wave the magic wand and get them built, but I certainly have no opposition to this.
We can give John the magic wand.
Here, we drag these folks in here for an automatic approval, and after a while you're wondering, okay, why are we automatically approving? Maybe it ought to have already been approved, so. Said my piece. Thank you.
I think that makes a tremendous amount of sense. I like the previous deal where you said you have previously approved, you know, and, and after we've done that three or four times, how many times, you know, we haven't failed to approve, and if there's a reason that you judge we should look at something like that, and I don't know whether we're allowed, Linda, to make a quote-unquote previous commitment that's been approved, or.
Yeah.
Precedent? Well, that's why I'm not a lawyer. You're going to fix that in January when you have him here. He'll know those words.
So I will make a comment on that. We do recommend to anyone who's going through the plating process to go through the rezoning process at the same time, so that homeowners don't have to come later on and go through this process. So we do push for it to go at the same time, but it's up, it's up to the person who's going through the plating process in order to do that, so.
Property owner.
The property owner, yeah.
Just a second. Larry, any, anything from yours?
Let me, let me finish that. And, and I guess I, I think what I'm seeing is that when applicants come into your office now and something doesn't comply, instead of them hearing no, you got to do something else, you're giving them the options that are available to them, and here are the steps, so that we don't have this month, oh, nope, you can't do it, come back next month, nope, can't do it, come back next month. So we're doing everything we can to accommodate the taxpayers here, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Dave?
I appreciate that too, but a quick question for either of you. When they come in for the, the partial plat, they pay a fee. Then they come back next month to rezone it, they pay another fee. Can we also have a look at, or waving the magic wand, that there just kind of be a wholesale deal on all of these fees?
Uh, we can look into that.
Okay, thank you.
We need to.
And I, right, but I think part of this, we're going to try to address as we review all the codes and regulations, are, are we not?
That's part of the purpose of revisiting the zoning regulations and our procedures is to update them to comport with what's becoming precedent in front of the commission, so that it, it speeds up the process for the landowners. Yep.
I guess my final comment to that is, I hope that somewhere through our administrators, through our council, we're keeping track of these things that we're making exceptions on, and how frequently we've done that, and do it well, and, and in conjunction with them. I, I, I get that. But that we're keeping track, because then we know whether we're doing exceptions more than what the rule is, so. So with that, this one does require a resolution, and I believe, Dory, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's forty-one dash twenty-two. If there's no more comments or questions, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we pass resolution forty-one dash twenty-two.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt a resolution forty-one dash twenty-two. Any additional comments or questions? If not, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
And Mackenzie, you're on for a couple of, or, let's see, one maybe?
Just one.
Yeah, okay.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners.
Good morning.
So before you this morning, we have a rezoning request. The applicant, James Randall, is requesting to rezone the property generally located at ninety-two-fifty North US Highway eighty-three in Finney County, Kansas, from A agricultural district to RR rural residential district. The property currently serves as the owner's residence and is used for agricultural purposes. Mr. Randall is currently going through the process of plotting the property for a new rural residential subdivision. So the proposed use of this property as residential is not consistent with the comprehensive plan slash future land use of agriculture. However, just to the north, there is an, another residential subdivision that is identified as the future land use of residential. The RR rural residential district is the appropriate zoning district for residential development. The governing body may approve the rezoning according to the criteria listed in sections twenty-seven dot zero-four-zero, which is listed below in your memo. This rezoning request did go before the planning commission, and they recommended approval of it on August eighteenth of two thousand twenty-two. And there are three alternatives before you today. The first is the governing body may adopt the planning commission's recommendation by approving the proposed resolution. The second is the governing body may override the planning commission's recommendation by a two-thirds majority vote. And the third is the governing body may return the recommendation to the planning commission with a statement specifying the basis for the governing body's failure to approve or disapprove. And staff recommends alternative one.
With that, we'll be talking about adoption of a resolution, and questions or comments from the Commissioners. Larry?
No.
Bob?
Just one quick question. What's the name of the development immediately next door?
Immediately to the north. I'm not sure the exact name of it, but it is the Northshore Circle Development. I know that's the.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's Northshore Development.
Okay.
And this would be resolution, correct me if I'm wrong, Dory, forty-two dash twenty-two. What is the board's desire?
I move we approve resolution forty-two, whatever else, whatever that dash is.
Twenty-two, yeah.
Yeah.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt a resolution forty-two dash twenty-two. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mackenzie. Appreciate it. All right. Kelly, why don't you come forward and tell us about this flex spending resolution, and why we have to approve it? No.
Well, good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
So this morning, you're being asked to consider by resolution automatic annual increases to Finney County's medical flexible spending account to the IRS maximum each year. Therefore, this would also allow the medical carryover between years to increase to the IRS indexed COLA at twenty percent of the medical maximum. A little bit of background, provided the documentation that I have available to me, we began offering this flex plan to our employees January of two thousand fifteen at an amount of five thousand for dependent care and twenty-five-hundred for medical with a five-hundred-dollar carryover. From two thousand fifteen through two thousand twenty-one, these amounts were held flat by administration. January of twenty-two, the decision was made to increase to the IRS maximum of two thousand eight-hundred-and-fifty for the medical plan, which also increased the carryover to twenty percent at five-hundred-and-seventy. And given the increasing cost of our deductibles, coinsurance, and healthcare in general, this decision makes sense. So just a little background on how the plan has ran over the last few years. In two thousand twenty, we had a total of one hundred and eighty-eight thousand eight-hundred-nine dollars deposited by employees. The plan ended with a positive ending balance of three thousand one hundred and fifty-six and thirty-five cents. Finney County FICA savings on that one hundred and eighty-eight thousand deposited by employees was fourteen thousand four forty-three and ninety cents. In two thousand twenty-one, the participant deposits were one hundred and sixty-three thousand six forty-three fifty-one. Plan ending balance was a negative three thousand three hundred and forty-three and eighty-three cents. Finney County FICA savings on the one hundred and sixty-three thousand was twelve thousand five hundred and eighteen and seventy-three cents. In two thousand twenty-two, the anticipated participant elections will be one thousand, excuse me, one hundred and seventy thousand eight hundred and ninety-three seventy-two. Anticipated Finney County FICA savings will be thirteen thousand seventy-three dollars and thirty-seven cents, should all elections be deposited. The benefits of this flexible spending account are setting aside pre-tax money to pay for qualified out-of-pocket healthcare costs for the employee, their spouse, and/or dependents. Expenses connected to work-related care of children under the age of thirteen or adult dependents who cannot care for themselves. This is a tax savings for both the employee and the employer. Couple of options are to allow Finney County's flexible plan to renew automatically to align with IRS guidelines, and allow the county administrator to sign the plan documents authorizing this. Option two would require Finney County's flexible spending plan to remain at an amount set by the board annually. My recommendation is to adopt resolution thirty-eight dash twenty-two, allowing the plan to renew automatically to align with IRS guidelines, and allow the county administrator to sign our plan documents. Any fiscal impact would be determined annually based off any deposits made and employment relationships by Finney County employees.
So the bottom line before I open it for questions is that we're simply being asked to adopt a resolution that would allow automatic changes based on the Fed's requirements.
Correct.
Than each year, the board having to set.
Set it, correct. Yep. And from just a little bit of history on the, the maximum. So in two thousand seventeen, it was twenty-six-hundred, and then it increased by fifty dollars a year. Until two thousand twenty-one, it held flat with two thousand twenty at twenty-seven-fifty. And then two thousand twenty-two, it did go up a hundred dollars. So we're looking at fifty or a hundred dollar difference between years.
Right.
Right now.
Correct, yeah. Larry, comments or questions?
I guess we're trusting in the IRS.
Right.
We've got eighty-seven thousand new employees, I guess, on the day.
To look over your shoulder.
Look over our shoulders, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Don't you feel, don't you feel better about that?
Yeah, I feel a lot better.
Bob?
I think it's an absolute win. When you look at what the county saves on their FICA, the employees save that same amount.
Absolutely.
Plus, the amount of savings that they have by tax-free investing in this. And I think the second thing is, it also has our employees having some skin in the game, if you will, in the whole benefit-type program. So I think it's an absolute win, and something we definitely need to support.
Thank you.
Dave, any?
No, if we're aligning with the IRS, that's probably proper to align with them, so.
That's what's scary.
So with, with that, I would entertain a motion to adopt resolution thirty-eight dash twenty-two, which makes this an automatic thing each year rather than coming to the board for changes.
We don't get to see Kelly again.
Well, she can come and report to us, give us all those stats.
There you go.
I would offer that motion, and.
All right. Dave has offered the motion to adopt this resolution. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Bob. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of adopting resolution thirty-eight dash twenty-two for the flex spending account, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Now we get to have Curtis come forward and for two or three different items.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Curtis.
Well, I guess the first thing I have for you is, I've got a bid before you. We went out to bid for cleaning and televising sewer district three. We've been having a lot of problems with it this year, and since it was built in two thousand and one, it has never been cleaned out. So it's, and needing cleaned out real bad. This, this pretty much falls in with our, the upgrades of all of our sewer districts that we are doing. This is the first step. We decided to get this cleaned out since we've been having a lot of issues with it. And then as soon as we are ready to go with the upgrades, it will actually make the upgrades faster to sewer district three since it will already be cleaned out. We went out to bid for this, and we only received one bid. The reason why we only received one bid is because the timeline that we initially put in for, we initially put in for, to have it cleaned by December fifteenth. We had a lot of companies out there asking if we could do an addendum to extend that, and we did do the addendum, but by the time we got the addendum out, several of them said. several of them said they just didn't have time to put the, to put their bid in in order to be able to come out here and look at the project. So, we only received the one bid. The one bid is for $97,333.50 from HydroClean LLC. So, that's, I'm asking for approval of this bid this morning.
Comments or questions, Larry?
Only comment I have is, in the future, can we give them more time? Is that your plan?
Well, initially, we believed it was enough time. I talked with Todd with SMH about it, too. It's just that evidently for, they're backlogged right now. I don't know if it could be because of, you know, the lack of manpower that some of them have. I don't know what the reason is, but that is definitely something that in the future, I'm going to have to look at. We thought we had given them plenty of time, and there were some companies that were even aware that we was going to be coming out with this.
What, in your opinion, is this high-low or do you have any idea?
This actually came in $20,000 under the engineered estimate. So, actually, we believe this is a low, a good bid.
Yeah, I would make that same comment. To me, the unit costs are surprisingly below what I thought they would be. And then I guess, secondly, kind of a Robert-Curtis deal, this is part of that ARPA piece of money that we set aside for Sewer District Three?
Yes, actually, for all sewer districts, we set aside $3.5 million.
But I mean, the particular piece, you said that Three was going to have, this would be in part of that?
Correct. This is the first step of it.
Yeah, thank you.
Dave?
The money's budgeted. You just need approval to spend it, correct?
Correct.
So, I'll offer the motion, Mr. Chairman, to authorize his expenditure as requested at $97,000, whatever the...
And is there a second to the motion?
Second.
And my only comment, Curtis, or question maybe. We're talking about getting this cleaned before the new subdivision begins. And I know they're getting close to beginning that, but we think this cleaning will be done before they would be connected.
Well, this, this company actually, and the answer would be yes. This company actually had their bid in before the addendum actually went out. So, that means that they are planning on getting to it fairly quick.
Yep. That was all I wanted to clarify. Any further comments? All in favor of the motion of $97,733.50 for this cleanout of Sewer District Number Three, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you, Curt.
Okay, the next item I have is we received a letter from the City of Garden City requesting that we waive the $2 per ton host fee on municipal waste at the landfill for their annual fall cleanup. During their annual fall cleanup, we will also have county residents will be able to also dump at the landfill without having the $2 per ton fee put on it. We have three additional sites that residents can dump their waste, and that's at the Acosta Trailer Park. And then we have a location on East Hillcrest Road and a location on Karen Street. This is just the same thing that we have been doing in the past. And what I'm needing this morning is for the board to approve the waiver of the $2 host fee per ton.
And before I entertain the motion for that, to me, the biggest thing is getting the publicity out there as quickly as possible about these two weekends, for example, where they can take things to the dump and the fee does not apply. Because the last time we did this, the comments that I received, well, I didn't know about that. Didn't realize I could do that until three days after. I'm pulling a number out of the air. So, just doing as much as we can to make sure that word gets out there. I know, for example, in our subdivision, we asked for that to be put on their Facebook page in both subdivision, subdivisions. So, just doing as much as we can to get it out to the residents that those two dates, 30th and 7th, they can haul to the landfill no cost.
Correct, correct. Now, I know that at the spring cleanup, Southwind, I believe rented a dumpster, and then they were able to take it to the landfill at no cost also. We, I would recommend any subdivision to do that. If the homeowners association is, you know, is able to go ahead and pay for a roll-off container or something in their subdivision, when it's hauled, we would also waive the fee for them also.
And we've done that in the spring. I don't know if our subdivision's planning to do that, but I will put that word out to them. I think they meet tomorrow, actually. But, oh, go ahead, yeah.
Curtis, one thing you might encourage Robin and Hope to do the exact thing that you just said, to roll off. They used to have ones, they'd set one up there at where the old hay mill site was.
Okay.
They had community cleanup, and so it seems to work pretty good. So, you might mention it to her, and they would probably be more willing to do that.
She's probably watching this morning, so she probably caught that. No, I...
I suppose.
I just say it. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, you mentioned the three places that you do something. What do you do for the Acosta Park and...
Basically, there's three sites that the residents around there can dump in a site instead of having to go all the way to the landfill. And then our crew will go there afterwards, and we load the debris up into our trucks, and we haul it to the landfill.
And those services are not available to these, to Towns River View and to Southwind? I mean, comparatively, people pay a lot of taxes.
Well, the problem, Bob, that we have is even with these sites, is that with the wind that we have, it does cause a lot of issues. These sites were identified well before I got here as far as areas that, I guess, hadn't been, maybe the residents hadn't been able to keep up with their debris and stuff. And by us providing the service that made it easier, made it easier for them to clean their sites up around those areas. For the county public works to go and provide this service to everybody, we could not do that. We are so shorthanded and stuff right now, this cleanup here is going to have an impact on us.
And for additional perspective, we tried to do that at Towns River View South a number of years ago. And then people kept using that as an illegal dump site. And it's taken us about 10 years to get this corrected just this last few months. So, we have to be careful about where these sites are because even though people are told this is a one-time thing during the year or twice during the year, they continue to use it. And we've battled that out in our subdivision for a number of years.
Well, I just know last year, the homeowners association did pay for those roll-offs. And, you know, and we appreciate the free dumping, but it is a significant amount of money. And people say, well, wait a minute, why, we're already paying for that service in our taxes, why don't we get it? So, I, Judge, I had to ask a question.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the question, but it's, I think we have to be just extremely careful where those sites are because it's been a longstanding issue at our, at our place.
Okay.
The very positive thing about this cleanup policy, if you will, is that our communities all seem to work together. And a good example, I recall, not very many years ago, and it seemed like in April, we had a real late snowstorm and tree limbs everywhere. And as I drove around town here, it was a city crew loading tree limbs on a county truck. Down the street was a county loader loading the tree limbs on a city truck, that sort of thing. To me, that's, that's, no taxpayer could ever complain about that kind of service. And so, the more we can do to kind of help people keep the community looking nice, the more I'm for it. I do have a side question, and I have asked this before. I occasionally see a city dump truck, and I realize their dump trucks are smaller, shorter, more easily fit into a driveway than, than your duallys. But you see a city dump truck sitting in somebody's driveway over the weekend, and they load the whatever on it there, and then come Monday morning, here comes a city employee and gets in that dump truck and drives it away. They're charging something, I'm assuming, for that service. But what a wonderful service for somebody that doesn't have any other ability to haul off mattresses and the bigger, larger things that, that we find in our homes that need to be disposed of. So, but all in all, the working together concept is, is something that we need to be proud of. So, thank you.
If there's no additional comments or questions, I would entertain a motion to waive the county's cost for the landfill during the cleanup, fall cleanup.
Mr. Chairman, so moved.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any additional comments? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion passes. So, Curtis, continue on with your third one.
Okay, we have a high-risk rural road application that Larry Brunghardt and Don had put in for the Public Works Department. This was, they did this in December of 2021. They did this with their own, they did it without having a director there. And I want to give them a lot of accolades for that, to take it upon themselves to apply for this grant without being under the direction of a director. There was a lot of counties that participated in a local road safety plan that was available. VFW Road from Mary Street to US 50 ended up being one of the top 10 projects identified by Trans Systems Engineering Firm. On that section of road, the ADT, their average, average daily traffic is 2,835. When the, when they reviewed all of the different projects and applications that was submitted, they, they based their criteria on risk factors, crash analysis, and different concerns that they brought forward to people during the safety workshop in May of '21. But VFW Road did receive this grant. It's for improving some safety issues on that section of road. The funding that was approved was $229,000 for the safety improvements on that section of road. However, approximately 23% of that is at our, we have to pay because it's a 90-10 split.
Twenty-three thousand?
Yes, 20, approximately 23,000. You know, it's not every day, though, that you do see people that go ahead and apply for grants and receive grant funds when there's not a director. You know, so, you know, I want to, it was a good job by Larry and Don to do this.
Duly noted, and we thank them for that. The 23,000 that would be our 10% match is coming from what source?
That would be coming out of our, what's the name of that fund? Yeah, special highway fund.
So, with that, questions or comments, Larry? Bob?
No, I think it's sounding like a great deal.
Didn't take any action on our part.
And the only action from, from our standpoint is the, they're asking for us to make a motion to sign off on this. And it looks like to me, at the end of that agreement, it's all commissioners signing the signature page. So, I would accept a motion to sign this agreement.
So moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second about Larry. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion passes. Any other?
No, that's it.
Comments for the good or the cause?
Thank you.
Thanks, Curt.
Thank you. Dory, you have what you need to have signed?
Does that require everybody's signature?
Yes. It looks like everybody's signature. Well, it's got three lines, but all, all five signatures, it looks like to me. Okay, that's fine. We're going to take a 10-minute break and reconvene just shortly after 10 o'clock. And in the meantime, for Larry and Bob's benefit, there's a whole stack of documents here that we need to be signed. So, just have a heads up. So, we are on break for 10 minutes.
Is that, and we can't...
So I, I think those two sections kind of do battle with one another or they're complementary. And we need to decide, is it in intermediate or is it in long-term? That's, that's what I'm, I'm confused as to which one belongs in which slot.
I would just simply add, and Larry and Dave, if you have different thoughts than, than mine, you're not going to offend me by expressing them. But in my recollection, Bob, we, we never did firmly define what immediate, immediate, intermediate, and long-term meant from a timeframe standpoint, like 12 months, six months, you know. I don't, and we certainly can do that. I'm, I'm not saying we shouldn't maybe think about doing that. But I don't know that we've ever really defined it. We, we've left it pretty, uh, pretty loose at this point as far as what those timeframes might be.
I think it's very, very difficult to measure.
Right.
If you don't have some kind of a box to check, did we do anything? You know, it can stay on that list forever and you say, yep, that's on our list. But if we don't take action, why do we have them written? So that's, that's why I'm asking for the differentiation between intermediate and long-term. Because some of these, Robert may say, you know, hey, the cost of that thing is way beyond where our budgets need to be. We've got to find some other nebulous funding deal down the road, so it needs to be in long-term. Whereas, we're looking at these other things and they need to be the intermediates. So, we're going to have to shuffle these two out of intermediate over to long-term. We're going to bring long-term back over to intermediate. But I think intermediate needs to be something that we're looking at either now or in that next budget cycle to get on the intermediate. Or if something comes up that needs to be done quicker, something has to come out of intermediate and go somewhere else, or else this document doesn't become a living document.
Good point. No, that's a valid point.
Mr. Yerba?
Yeah, go ahead.
I might add, really, the, the thing as you look at these is when you differentiate, and Bob hit it on the head there at the, there at the last, is that usually it's, it's not enough just to identify something. It's, um, those are actually the easy things. But, but more importantly is what is the funding source now for that? And, and for that particular project, there's not been a funding source identified. Uh, it's, it's something that you're constantly have in the back of your mind now and trying to identify, is there something that is coming around through the state level in, in terms of a grant opportunity or whatever the case may be. But absent that, because of the price tag, it's, it's probably more of a long, long-term, uh, project until funding is identified. Then it moves up i- into that intermediate, and that's traditionally how you do that. Same way as what we talked about with the HVAC system across the street there, uh, at the LAC building. Uh, it's one that we know that is pressing, that, uh, has challenges and so forth. But at this point in time, we don't have a dedicated funding source for that project. Now, we're working on that through the budgeting process to start setting some monies aside. But, but that particular project, by way of example, is a four to six million dollar project. And right at this very moment, there is no money set aside for that. So, so as, that's that great balancing act as you go through not just the annual budget, but capital budgeting is to, um, once you find that funding source, then you put it in that intermediate slot of this is, it's now in queuing. We're ready to go. Uh, we're saving thirty, forty, fifty percent. Or are we willing to issue debt on something like that? And then if you are, uh, how, how's that, that repayment structure set up? So those are things we look at.
Your comments, Larry and, and Dave, with regard to, uh, intermediate, uh, the, you know, what the, the questions that have been raised here, you know, about moving things from one area to another and how do we define these categories and so forth? So, along that, that subject line.
Long-term, yeah. In, in my age, long-term is not very long.
Shorter than it used to be, yeah, yeah.
And, uh, intermediate is what it is. But I, I, I do believe you need to set a timeline. Also, do you, we, we didn't see any mention on here of the, uh, Health Department EMS.
Yeah, yeah, down at the bottom of the, uh...
I see it right under my thumb.
Page two.
Had it covered up, sorry.
We had that in ongoing, just simply because that is in process and we're getting ready to do things, so. Yeah, but, no, good, good question.
No, I, that's not a problem. Set a timeline.
Yeah. Dave, uh, along the discussion of intermediate, long-term.
Well, some of that...
Moving from one area to another, so forth.
Some of that, some of those projects, it isn't just, we're going to start it two weeks from Tuesday or four years from Tuesday. There's kind of a process. The, the building that we're talking about, right now, the, the Health Department and EMS, there's a process, should be, uh, starting some of these days of looking at the needs that, of that building. Before, before you go build something, what do we need to, to have for a structure? That sort of thing. But I'm going to throw out something else on that we've talked about for years and it's nowhere in this document. And I don't know how to term it other than employee, development, uh, recruitment. Um, let's turn that around. Recruitment, development, and, and retention. We keep talking about it, but it's nowhere in any of our plans. Are we going to work on that any or, or not, so?
I'm just making a couple notes here. As you look through the, and I'm looking at pages two and three with the, the projects and so forth. As you look through those, starting on page two and just, your eyes just kind of working down and, and mine focused immediately on housing projects. Do we have any others that we need to include specifically? Or do we just, and, and if we don't, and I'm going to take that word "other" out of there. I just did it to remind ourselves. And this is regardless of whether they end up on, in one of the three categories. But as, as projects, are we aware of any others that need to be specifically mentioned at this point?
Is there, theoretically, the federal government passed something called an infrastructure bill or something and had a whole bunch of money attached that we haven't seen much. Is there any plus or minus to having some planning done on, let's say, the West Side Sewer District? So that if some money became available and they were looking for shovel-ready projects, uh, that we could say, wait a minute, we have one of those and it would impact housing and stuff like that? Is there, uh, things like that or Mansfield Road? You know, that probably the two most expensive start-from-scratch projects that we have out there. Is there any plus or minus to having a concept developed so that we can say, we're ready to go?
Well, and, and I'm going to turn to Robert here in just a minute, uh, on the West Side Sewer District and, and on the, uh, health bill, the health needs that was just referenced, uh, here in just a second. But, uh, the, uh, infrastructure bill, the state is doing a lot of educating, if you will, with regard to what that bill includes and the funding for different projects and so forth. I know that's going on, uh, as we, as we speak. But your comment, Bob, reminds me of, of Julia Lorenz's, uh, two pipelines that she has for the transportation. And one's the planning and design stage, ready to be shovel-ready. And then it moves into the constructions, uh, stage once funding is appropriated for that. So I, my vision is something similar, uh, if I'm interpreting your, your comments and questions proper. Couple of different pipelines.
You're absolutely correct. And if I remember correctly, I believe at the KAC, there's also a session on that, if I remember correctly.
I think, I think that's right. I haven't looked.
So, um, but yes, traditionally you'll, you'll bring a project up to a certain point, uh, whether it's ten to fifteen percent on plans and, and at least it is something that, um, the, the concept, uh, is a little bit further along than just an idea, just a rough idea.
So, with that comment, where are we on the West Side Sewer? And where are we on, uh, the Health, uh, the, uh, Health Department EMS? With regard to those kind of, that pipeline concept, if you will?
Yeah, the, uh, West Side Sewer, um, is, there's nothing that has been done on that as far as on the EMS, um, um, Health Department. Uh, we're trying to wrap up some stuff on the EMS portions of the fire station. Uh, that's on the east side and, and probably take some thoughts and ideas from that to begin that process, uh, for their, um, Eighth and Mary, uh, facility. So, uh, and I do have both, um, at least internally, staff working on, um, conceptually, what, what things they see that they need within that, uh, before we start working with a consultant so that we can get those thoughts down on paper and begin the process.
So, and I'm going to come to Mansfield here in a second. But with regard to both the Health EMS building and Sewer District, we've got them listed right now as ongoing. Is that appropriate? Is, is that where we are with those?
As far as the Health EMS, since you do have a dedicated revenue stream, that's appropriate.
Okay.
Um, the, the Sewer District, and once again, until you get that revenue stream, it's, it's more of a long-term.
So, long-term versus intermediate?
Yes.
Okay, so that, that needs to be moved then?
Well, they put together, you know, when you wrote those block grants requests.
Correct.
For the Sewer District, you had to have something more than just a concept, so, you know, there's...
They had engineering, uh, concepts of what, what, uh, at like three or four dish- different levels of, um, improvements, if you will, in essence, treatment. And, and, and with that, it had a, it, it had a map of service area and things of that nature.
So if you're, if you're getting a requ- you get a shovel deal from the federal government, I, I would say here's this, and you could at least roll that out.
Correct. But oftentimes they'll, they'll want, uh, they may, they'll want specifics what to submit to them. So there may be some additional things. Correct. Yeah.
Good point, yeah.
But it's not like you, you're just going to give them blank these papers.
And then, uh, the other that's been mentioned here a couple of different times is the Mansfield Road. And, and we've talked about it most of the time I've been on this commission. And, but at this particular point, uh, with the concept of the two pipelines, is anything in the planning, design, pipeline?
I may have Kurt speak to that.
And that's fine, yeah, yeah. That's fine who, who speaks to it.
Well, there's nothing actually planned right now for Mansfield. What I want to let you know about though is that here, in the next year, year and a half, I'm planning on coming forward with a 2040 or a 2050 transportation plan. What that is, that's a transportation plan that we will hire a consulting firm. And I've done the, I've done these before. And we will be coordinating with Holcombe, we'll be coordinating with Garden City and in Fannie County with all where the future build-outs and everything are going to be. But this study will actually study the full transportation system inside of Fannie County. Once this happens, um, this will actually identify where we believe the future truck routes need to be going, going around Garden City or whatever for how we feel like the build-out will be by 2040 or 2050. By this process, I will be able to start identifying yearly projects to come forward with as far as this is what we need to start doing in order to start preparing for the future. Uh, typically, the, I plan on getting grants to help with this transportation study. Normally, that, that is available. Um, and it's a pretty, uh, you know, you're probably looking at a study. It's going to cost you about a quarter of a million dollars. But they are very, very in-depth and it looks at not only the future infrastructure, future truck routes or anything like that. It will also look at the future, uh, county needs as far as what we think Public Works needs to look like into the future also in order to prepare for the future. Um, as far as Mans, Mansfield, I mean, the, the crews have been out there, uh, patching Mansfield. Um, I'm going to be talking to David Butterey to see if there's any funds left over from the farmland road project, uh, because Mansfield took a beating because of that project. When they had that road shut down, the trucks were just beating it up bad. I'm going to see if, if maybe Dave has something available there to help us with. But I have an idea that regardless of the study that's going forward, that's going to have to be addressed here fairly quick. And, uh, you know, this year, we had planned on doing Highway 83, an overlay on Highway 83. And I held back, as you remember, because of the cost of asphalt right now. Um, I would say that Mansfield's probably one we need to be looking at here real quick as, as orders, as far as getting it improved.
Kurt, um, Mansfield, from farmland east or farmland west, which is the busiest section?
Farmland east, yes.
Towards, uh, east trucking?
Yes.
Going west, you can't go anywhere.
Going toward, uh, Pierceville.
Because all of the TPNL stuff came out and went that way because they couldn't go north on Jenny Barker.
And they, they beat the shoulders up real bad on that.
But by the same token, kind of one of the few industrial areas we have available to us kind of now, if you will, would be Mansfield Road from farmland west because there is city water out to Meese and the wastewater treatment plant's there. And rail is there. So, that piece between Meese Trucking on out to where Clots is set up now is some prime industrial area that, you know, probably the most accessible because of wastewater and water. Because all the other areas that we're talking about, we lack that. And so that's why maybe, I think that's why it's on the intermediate because it really impacts our ability to respond, if you can, if we will, to, uh, future industrial potentials.
And it's things like that that this study that I'm talking about will identify. It'll, it'll identify, um, uh, places just like what you just mentioned. And it'll identify that, you know, in other areas. And usually, usually all these things that are identified is around all the growth nodes of the cities, of course. Um, so, but I know Mansfield would definitely be one that they would be looking at in that study.
I, I guess what bothers me is that, you know, we've got to do the plan and then we've got to get a grant and then we've got to get the consultant. And, you know, pretty soon, we're five years out and that's what I'm nervous about. So, that personal comment, so.
I know you better have a grant money set up because I, I'm speaking for the one commissioner that's not here. He does not approve of grants, or I mean of, uh...
Consultants, consultants.
Oh, okay.
He is not a consultant.
I can, I feel, I feel it.
You feel the heat?
Yeah, I feel it when the word consultant came out, uh...
Okay.
I, I would echo what Larry just said.
Thank you.
Thank you, Curtis. So, let me, uh, let me refine this a little bit. I would, uh, ask for your feedback by email as far as anything that you think we need to define better and so forth. Because at the next meeting in two weeks, um, I would like to review this one more time and, uh, put our stamp of approval on it, uh, for, as a document to guide the staff going forward. So, uh, good, some good thoughts here, a couple of notes I've taken.
Can we give another good thought?
If, if you have to today, that, we'll take it. Yeah, well, we'll take it.
All ready for another accolade here, Bob. You asked a question a while ago that's, is difficult to answer. But what's the difference between intermediate and immediate and so on? I just wrote something down here. I'm going to throw it out. And the, the numbers I put here aren't as important maybe as the concept. But what if we said immediate means something that is happening within the current budget year? Or make it two years if you want. And intermediate within the next three budget years. And long-term, four or more budget years to fruition. So that it's something that, we're, like our, um, EMS building. We're not going to have that done in four years. But that's a plan that we, we need to be working on to get to that place. Would, would those, that sort of a concept work to put some timeframes in our, in our plan?
Opened comments from Larry and Bob. Uh, Bob, you want to go first?
Well, I think if it doesn't fit within something like that, then it ought to move to another column. So you end up with three columns for your projects. And as budgets become available or not, something has to give. And so it comes back as the onus on the commissioners to say, all right, we're willing to give up on this one, but we're going to shuffle this one over. So that there is direction to staff and we get direction based on budget availability or funding sources. Or if you want to do that, you have to do this. So, yeah, I, I like the concept because, again, goals without dates and expectations don't mean a lot.
I, I'm sensitive to that, yeah.
Well, I like, like the, uh, long-term under, I mean, long-term basically is one commissioner's term. And, you know, I think that's, that's all farther, you know, that most of us can actually plan to do something, if we're going to really do, make an impact, is, is the term what we're serving.
Okay. All right. Well, if you, please look through pages two and three, uh, as thoroughly as possible between now and the next two weeks and, uh, or the next meeting in two weeks. And then if you have any additional thoughts with regard to the definition of these categories, feed them to me and we'll plan on, uh, approving this document, uh, at the next meeting. Okay. I think I've got the notes here that I need and we'll get that refined and back out to you. Thank you for the discussion and, uh, I think this is what our board governance is all about, is trying to think into the future, think about projects, trying to guide staff, give them the, the guidelines and then let them go to work on a daily basis, proceeding with that. So thank you very much for that discussion. I will move, oh, go ahead.
I apologize. Um, I did provide you with draft agenda for tomorrow meetings and meetings.
Get to that in just a minute, yeah. But thank you. Yes, I appreciate that. So now we'll move into the category of staff reports and, uh, I think, uh, Maria, where, yeah, there you are. I thought, I saw you come into the room, uh, wanted to give us a report with regard to property valuation.
Yes. Um, good morning.
Good morning.
Um, you, these letters you receive annually from Property Evaluation Department. Um, the ones I'm going to talk about today is one that you received on August 3rd, or you got sent out on August 3rd. And it's with, um, KSA 79 dash 1489, which deals with the 2021 Real Estate Appraisal Sales Ratio Study, which, we're in '22. Uh, but the way it kind of works with the ratio study, it takes from January 1st to December 31st. So usually you don't get it until like the following year. Uh, and with that one, the reason I bring that one up is because, um, we did meet the performance standards for residential properties for the median ratio and the coefficient of dispersion, or the COD. With commercial properties, we met the coefficient of dispersion standard, but the overall appraisal level and the sales median ratio fell a little short. And with that, um, PBD said that they would meet with commissioners if need be and they would notify me if they're going to come talk to you about that. Um, and as of yet, they have not notified me, so maybe they won't, but I'm making you aware of it. Um, so, and it's, and I think it just kind of goes across the state. At our last, um, PBD, uh, conference, uh, they said about 40 counties in the state are this way. It's just commercial, we're just having a hard time across the state staying in compliance. Uh, part of the reason also is to, and I know I brought, I have Mary here in case you had some questions for the commercial side of it. Uh, we did try to get some sales, um, taken out. Um, when you do a sales ratio, you try to eliminate sales that are maybe too high or there are certain things about the sales that need to be not, you know, taken out because they're not, um, what we would call valid, uh, for our sales ratio. So, um, and then the other letter was sent out on August 19th. And that is to do with our statistical compliance, which with that one, um, it's 79 dash 1445, states at you. And for that, you need to meet a minimum of 75 points. And Fannie County has, uh, successfully achieved compliance. And we have since, we've, since I've been here in the county since 1995 for that. And that pretty much, it's just kind of like, um, kind of like a checklist. You kind of, okay, you did this, you did this, you finished this, you did this on time, you're meeting this and all of that kind of stuff. So, we usually do pretty good. Um, our grades usually A and B, if you want to look at it that way, the way they kind of scores, score us. Um, and with that, I just kind of give kudos to my appraisal staff because, you know, it's all of our effort trying to do all the, um, do all that stuff. And so we do a pretty good job of staying in compliance with that and doing our sales or building permits, uh, 17% hearings and all of that and valuing. So, um, and I think we do a pretty good job of that. And, and I think that is what I had, unless you have some questions?
Questions to Maria while she's at the podium. Larry?
Have you had any protests on the, on the taxes filed here?
For informals? Not at the informal level. Um, we've actually had, since Dory had to send out those letters, we've had more calls from those letters than we did at the informal level. And I don't know. So, thank you very much. Um, yeah, and I think it's just the fact that I think on those letters, it kind of put it out in a tax dollar amount. And so when they get the value notices in March, they're just looking at an appraised value. And I don't think they sometimes get the concept of like how much that is in taxes. So when Dory sent out the letters and it actually put like a tax dollar amount, there was a lot more questions. So, and that typically happens. Um, and that's why then we'll probably have a lot more on payment under protest hearings come December because that's what we were telling them, um, when we got, when they were calling us about those letters, about the taxes and so forth on that part, when they were talking about, you know, the increase or whatever. Um, it's a payment under protest that they have to go and do and then we'll talk about the, the value. Those come out, uh, we have to send them, um, April, April 1, or they bring them in, so May, May 1. But are you talking about the valuations or are you talking about what they set for a dollar? The dollar amount like in January? Yeah. With the oil and gas or are you talking state assessed? Okay. Oil and gas did go up. Um, and I think I sent, Robert, did I send you the estimate on the, what real estate went up, oil and gas went up and commercial? And the oil and gas did go up because their dollar per barrel was quite a bit up from previous years. Because... Mm-hmm. Yeah. So.
Other questions, Bob?
But isn't that on a, like an eight-year rolling average on oil and gas?
That's your ag ground. Your ag ground's on an eight-year.
Oil and gas can fluctuate every year and?
Yes, it'll fluctuate depending on what oil and gas prices are. The property director will get like at the beginning of the year, they get with the oil industry and they talk about prices and what what they forecast it's going to do in the next coming year. And that's how they come up with what the price is going to be. And that's usually set around in January.
Okay, thank you.
Did Roger, did Roger Hamm retire?
Yes.
He could kind of make this stuff all make sense. We need to bring him back.
He does make things.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments to Maria while she's here? Thank you, Maria. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
County administrator.
Okay, real briefly, we have a twenty twenty-three budget, which is kind of a big thing. Thank you for that again. Need to get with Commissioner Larry Jones a little bit following the meeting just to discuss firing EMS station real quick on that. Yeah, so I do need to touch base with you on that. Going through the final review on the development agreement with Randall Estates, I think Linda will touch base on that a little bit more on her report. Just a reminder, need a voting delegate for the KAC, which is something that you can do between now and probably the first meeting in October, I would imagine.
Yeah, I do have that and I sent out a query to the department heads to see who else was going so we could put somebody in the alternate spot.
Okay. Very good. Just an update, as you recall, we switched, we're comp carrier. They've been out a couple of times, did some reviews of facilities. Also, Paul over in E Management as well as Dallas have been doing a really good job of getting the safety committee back up and running again. And I think that's something to report to that that Dave had some concerns about for a while that that kind of fell by the wayside, so that's going up. That's going on again. Additionally, this is touching base on employee development and talent recruitment. You'll find that HR is doing more and more outreach to employees on various things. Just a sidebar or a reminder, on October tenth, we do have our in-service day. I do think we had one or two commissioners show up last year to that. Like to see everybody there if at all possible. And Kelly can brief them on what's going on if you don't mind what's being planned because you're you're starting to tie that up as we speak.
So we have confirmed with Trooper Ben will be back. He'll be our keynote and doing breakouts this year. Department of Homeland Security will be doing breakouts. And then just last week, I have not heard back from Aaron yet. They did have a meeting on Friday, but Leadership Garden City, I believe, is going to do a breakout. So we've had a little bit of difficulty with food. The food prices are are way up this year and we've been back and forth with several vendors. But I think we're finally getting to a point where that is getting confirmed as well. So we've got a big day planned, a lot of fun and collaboration between departments, so we're excited for our second year.
What time is that, please?
It'll run all day, so most of the employees will start showing up between seven and eight AM. We'll have breakfast going and then they'll leave around the date about four, four-thirty. It is October tenth, Columbus Day. It's a Monday.
On indigenous.
Yes.
For somebody.
Thanks.
And really, that's all I have for you at this point.
Well, and then I was just going to have you call attention to the one document. It's up on the screen now that that you just put in our, you put in our packet just for information and and so forth. With these particular projects, there's nothing for us to do unless we want to protest or that's not the right word, but veto. Yeah, unless we want to veto that.
That's correct, yes. I forgot to remind you on that. That I believe is being acted upon.
Back up one page on the screen, please.
Believe that meeting is being actually, that document's being acted upon today, I believe. Then at that point, you have thirty days to approve or disapprove.
Just want to make sure.
For R H I D for the city.
Everybody had seen that that was being addressed at the city this afternoon. Yeah.
Hey, just talking about Chapel Heights, I understand our governor is going to be here September twentieth. And Chapel Heights has been a perfect example of the benefit of R H I D because they've done it in small segments. And from what I understand, she's going to tour that and look at that and and hopefully highlight that whole concept. And I think it's especially true with all of the R H I D action the county has right now. It's a very positive thing for our housing situation.
Get point, and that is the right date, the twentieth of September. Any questions or comments to Robert? Linda, anything from the counselor's office?
Just an update on tax sale. We did get a good chunk of title searches done through the title and abstract company. So I would estimate probably, oh, in, on next Monday, I would, I would guess I would have the time to get to the point that we can start thinking about filing that with the court. And then with regard to Randall Estates, we're in the process of finishing up the development agreement for approval on that R H I D. So that should be continuing to progress. Really, it's, it's, it's starting to become a more familiar process, I think, for all of us working with it. And so I'm very hopeful that as we develop our familiarity, that that will go more quickly for these R H I D projects that are in the county.
Any questions or comments to Linda?
Yeah, I think that was going to be mine was the R H I D is the template starting to take form and?
Yeah, so so I would say the Neighborhood Development Office, of course, has done a great job with that. I've worked a little bit with one of the city's attorneys quite a bit. We've sat down and and talked through quite a bit of R H I D legal framework and that sort of thing. So it's been very helpful and I've appreciated just the team effort that everyone's given. So I I'm very optimistic that this program will be very, will become more and more streamlined the more we do it. Of course, you know, Robert and Jenny at our office are overseeing the financial portion of that. So I, yeah, I'm, I'm really, really optimistic and excited as we go forward.
Yeah, I guess the other thing I'm excited about is that Neighborhood Development is working with you. You're working with them, you're working with the city and their legal people. And all of a sudden, we're starting to come up with a format that will be more or less common. So when people come into our community, it's a little easier to do business. That's fantastic. Thank you. And it also helped, you got to sell a lot of paper for the telegram, publishing all of that. And for those of us who can't read that fine print, I think it was okay.
It was according to the statute.
Guys at the coffee shop would like some county employee to add up how many dollars are represented in those six pages.
It had to be a lot of money.
Quite a bit, quite a bit.
And yet the interest is probably better than you could ever invest the money you have on hand, so.
On the serious side, the judgment was that probably a million dollars or close to it on those six pages. And if you have a fifty-one million dollar budget, having a million of it out there owed but not paid impacts how you carry out your business. And so it does, so.
Yep, that's quite a bit of the increase in our health insurance line item, so. At the computer, if you could pull up the upcoming meetings, please. And enlarge it just slightly, but try to keep most of that page there. That'll work. You can see those different meetings, but I want to highlight two or three of them. First of all is our meeting tomorrow with the area counties. And I think we invited eight area counties and I'm just passing out to you the draft agenda for tomorrow evening. And and that we invited the commissioners, the county clerks and the county counselors to join us at this meeting tomorrow starting at six. Dinner will start soon after we convene the meeting. I also took the liberty of inviting Jerry Schultz and he plans to be there with us since he'll be coming on board in January. And also I invited Representative Clifford and Representative-elect Lewis. Have not heard back from Bob yet, but Bill Clifford said he would be there for them to observe and hear what's being said, the things they might be able to take back to Topeka in January when they go. So the purpose of this meeting, as you can see from the agenda, is to talk about several items. If you have items you want to have, you want added to the agenda, we certainly can do that. And then we're going to take questions from the floor, if you will, and if there's other items, we'll, we'll add them.
You should survey the crowd and see how many of them are revenue neutral.
Yeah, well, so far I haven't found, yeah, so far I haven't found one. But supposedly, according to the statewide communication that I received, there are some counties and some cities who have remained revenue neutral, but it's a very limited number at this point out of all the public governmental agencies.
The people invited tomorrow night, are there any county administrators that should have been included that were not?
Well, most of them work with their clerks in these smaller counties and that's why we made sure the clerks were.
Seward and Ford can both have?
We, we don't have them on this list for tomorrow. It's, it's just our, the counties that touch Fannie County.
Okay, all right.
Ford and Seward on, we, we can, we can certainly have a, a visit with them sometime. But we tried to make it to our neighbor, neighboring counties at this point. We expanded the list a little bit from the last time when Larry was chair by three or four counties, I think, from what that list was. So it's going to, we want to make it a fairly open discussion, but we want to have a little bit of structure to it. That's why we put a tentative agenda together. And related to a question that came up earlier with regard to transportation, the purpose of this meeting is to get general discussion. If transportation, say, for example, the Highway eighty-three thing leads to some additional discussion, then we'll bring in other KDOT analysis, you know, things like that. And we'll have another session with the parties involved and who want to be involved with that. Lastly, the intent of having this meeting at this particular time, to refresh your memory, was everyone should be through their budget process. And then we wanted to be, meet before KLPG, which is next week. So that if there are some legislative things that we want to take to KLPG as a larger group, we're ready to do that. So six o'clock tomorrow and there will be food and discussion. Moving down that September list, KLPG, I am having to back out of that. I had signed up for it. But I have a commitment, a conflict that arose for next week. And so I alerted Doug Smith that I would not be there, but I suggested to him that Jerry Schultz might be. I'm going to ask Jerry tomorrow if he would be interested in attending that, just again, so he can get acquainted with area counties.
Yeah, everybody should have received a email from R S V P for that.
Right. Yeah, I think each individually did.
Yeah.
And so my final thing on that, are the other three of you planning to be at KLPG?
I'm going to go to the first part, then to the second. I'm going to be out of town the next day.
That's right. Yeah, you had mentioned it. And I think, I think Dwayne's planning to be there, but I'm not positive, but I think so. So we'll be represented well. And Larry, I would just simply ask that if there's things that come out of tomorrow evening, that you be the representative of our regional group. If, if something needs to be relayed on to KLPG, I would ask that you do that. I was planning to, but not going to be able to. Then on the fifteenth is the groundbreaking for Western Kansas Corridor. And we don't have times on here, but I was told it was four o'clock.
It's four-thirty.
Four-thirty, okay. And so mark that on there and stamp it with four-thirty time.
Economic Development did tell me that they would be sending out a formal invitation, but that it wasn't set in stone yet, so.
And again, I, I'm not going to be able to attend that just simply because of this conflict that arose over the weekend. So Larry, if you're able to be there and they ask for a spokesperson from the county, I would. No, that's the, it's KLPG day. It's right before KLPG convenes.
Actually, I've been asked to be speaker.
Oh, okay, okay. And that's fine. Yeah, that's fine. Just keep your calendar open, would you? And then on the nineteenth, we, there's noted on the schedule an eight-thirty commission meeting, but I believe we've moved that to one-thirty, did we not?
We did.
The morning is filled with that emergency management thing. Am I correct on that? No, no, that's, I just want to make sure. So make sure that you have county commission meeting at one-thirty on the nineteenth. But at eight or eight-thirty that morning is that half a day emergency management stuff that Paul referenced the last time he was here. And we haven't received any formal information about that, correct? Or I haven't seen anything.
Their LAPC meets Thursday and. So that'll, that'll probably come out from that.
And then chamber breakfast. It's always good to go and see some other folks. And then I have asked for clarification on this KNRC thing. I've been asked to attend it, but I haven't seen any agenda in Pratt on the twenty-ninth and thirtieth. But I haven't yet received the information about it. And then back on October, I will, I am signed up to attend the KAC annual conference. It doesn't mean anybody else can't from this board as well. But the issue this year is that's a county commission day for us. And so I will miss the county commission regular session on the seventeenth because that's when the conference starts. So Larry, if hopefully you're available to chair the meeting on this October seventeenth. And as far as delegate, I told, I told Dory that I'm willing to be that delegate, but we also need to find a alternate. Anything else from a upcoming meeting standpoint? I know we've elaborated that a little bit, but I think it was important. Okay, commissioner reports. Larry, let's start with you.
First thing I wanted to mention was to make sure you have all R S V P for KLPG. Had a, been to several budget hearings. I think several of us went to the community college hearing and then we went to the extension hearing. And it was interesting, and I'm getting ready to go to three-six threes that are coming up this twelfth of September. So I'm going to, this time I've got actual numbers. I want to make sure, comment when they have comment period, tell them what you're spending for this service. To see if they got any comment on the public that's there at the meetings. At the extension meeting, there wasn't any public there other than us, the commissioners. But at the junior college, there were several people that were there and in fact, one of them spoke, which was good, so. Also, attended the IMA insurance meeting. The thing I thought was interesting.
Excuse me, Larry, is your mic on?
Yeah, I don't know, it's behind my computer.
It's on.
It's on.
Just need to get it closer.
Okay. It was hiding. The IMA Insurance Meeting, and I thought was quite interesting on our medical costs and our drug costs. And our net drug costs are forty-seven percent, and typical is a seventy-thirty. And so, that is what IMA told us, that's indicating of chronic disease or ongoing disease. And so, I encourage everybody that's an employee to make sure and participate in these wellness facilities that we've got set up with GrowWell. They, go in and see them, get on a plan of action, because I think it's important that we try to get some of these costs under control.
I think Tria Health also can help specifically on prescription management.
So, it's, you know, those are, that was the one thing that kind of, other than the forty-one percent increase, kind of caught my attention. That's all.
Okay, yeah, good point on that IMA report.
Yeah, we also did some of the budget hearings and had our Compass Board Meeting. Continues to be a very, very positive deal. They see lots of, lots of improvement in operations. They've gone to electronic medical records, and it's working very well. Last Monday, we had our fifth Monday and had a session with the city, the county, economic development. And I talked a little bit about workforce development. And we have a new impetus that's coming out. And I think when we look at the urgency for healthcare, or excuse me, for housing and childcare and workforce are the three biggest things we have. And if we look at that goal that says that we be a positive contributor, particularly as a convener, for activities that affect the community, I think this is a perfect place for the county to take a lead. You know, and if, if we could get it to work out with, with Robert and Kelly to where the county could be the convener for this workforce development, we need to have a meeting with the city, the county, USD three-six-three, four-five-seven, the college, the chamber, the Fannie County Convention Visitors Bureau, and economic development, and workforce one. And get it all together, because right now, our business community is standing on the outside begging for employees. We have the educational system on the other side, educating students, and they're not talking to one another. And we need to break that down. And the Kansas State Department of Education has got some really good tools that are basically formulas and concepts and methodology that businesses can use to interact with the school district and do internships and do job shadowing. Our new Superintendent of Schools here in Garden, Dr. Mike Dominguez, is very, very strong and very forward-thinking in terms of this. We met with Steve Nordby, the principal of the high school, and his administration team. And they are looking very diligently, finding a way to get two hundred students out of the classroom into the business community to see the business opportunities. And I look at what Kurt does and what the sheriff does and everybody else and say, you know, if we could go up and interact with the high school and show these students the job opportunities that are here, it would give them another reason to stay in our part of the world. So, I guess if it was possible, and it's a, it's a pressing need. We're going to get going, we're going to get started, because the school year's already going. And we did this three years ago, and we convened a meeting like this. And it went very, very well, and then we ran into our favorite topic called COVID, and we got stopped. But it's time to start it again. And I'm going to be very involved in it from the Governor's Council on Education. But if we could have quote-unquote "this letterhead" coming out, I think it fits exactly what we're trying to do. And I would ask that that maybe be done. And I'd love to work with Kelly, because I think as the HR person, she would be the perfect one to address that and see what we can do for gaining employees. That's all I have.
Good suggestion, good suggestion. Dave?
I had only one meeting that I attended, and that was the library, and not anything unusual. It was a routine library business. And I have a meeting with the local emergency planning committee on Thursday that I will miss, but Bob will cover for me. And so, with that, Mr. Chairman, I have a person sitting at my front yard, ready to put grass seed down, needs some direction, how soon are we going to be through?
Well, we've got an executive session, but if you need to leave before that, we can, we can.
Need to tell them here or something, so.
Just tell them you need rain as soon as they put the sun down, so. I'll make mine relatively brief. Not so many meetings, if you will, although I did attend economic development board meeting the other day and so forth. But I've been, unfortunately, with some family things going on, I've had to miss some things like the fifth Monday meeting, and I appreciate getting feedback on that. But I have been working on, and it's one of the things referenced, on the rural water possibility for our subdivision. I don't know where it's going to go, but we met with a KCC representative a week ago today and gave us some ideas. We've been in conversation with Kansas Rural Water, and I don't know what's going to happen. But we've got a huge issue out in our neighborhood with the owner of our water system being in these eighties and so forth that we need to work on. Another one is just a point of information. The RFP that we talked about for the facilities assessment or audit is online. And Roxanne was here earlier, but it's been coordinated by CVB, being coordinated by CVB. But links to that website, and Shannon Dick also provided us some suggestions on how to get that linked. And I appreciate everybody's work on that. The other thing that I have not mentioned already, because we've talked about KLPG, KAC, and so forth, just this morning, and there's somebody that gets up as early as you do, Dory, because this email was stamped at four forty-eight this, oh, no, this is four forty-eight PM. I'm just, I'm just bumping you. I just got it at four thirty this morning, but he wrote it last night. But KAC has asked me to, if I'd be willing to testify in front of Senator McGinn's Committee on Mental Health, Bed Space, and so forth, with regard to mental health in the jails and that type of thing. I told him with his help on the testimony that I would be willing to do that. And it's set for, oh, September twenty-eighth of this month. And supposedly, the, they're working with the Hospital Association, Sheriff's Association, Community Mental Health Centers. And I don't know if Lisa's going to be contacted, but many times she is for things like that from Compass. Jeff Easter, the sheriff in Sedgwick County, is going to be one providing testimony, and I don't know who the others are. So, I'll give you more information about that. But there is an awareness in Topeka that we need to be addressing mental health issues. Seems like I had, the one-thirty on the nineteenth. I wanted to make sure that we had, yeah, so I've touched on all the others through the, through the meeting. With that, we do have a need for an executive session for the purpose of attorney-client privilege. And I'm going to look to Robert and Linda. I'm assuming that the two of you need to be in that session with us, and Kelly. So, the three of you plus us board members. Fifteen minutes, or? Up to ten minutes? So, it's eleven oh five, right at eleven oh five. So, motion to convene an executive session, including those three staff, and reconvene no later than eleven fifteen.
Mr. Chairman, so move.
Is there a seconded by Larry?
And note that I'll be absent.
Oh, and then, it'll be the three of us commissioners, Dave will not.
Sorry about that.
Oh, that's okay. So, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion passes, we'll reconvene no later than eleven fifteen.